Okay, we're going to bring this second forum, public forum into order for the redistricting of the county. My name is Rich Johnson. I'm the chair. First, we welcome you to here to say what you've got to say. Before we get started, ask that you turn off your cellphone or put it to vibrate. We're going to do a roll call of our members. Start from our left.
Matt Bergen.
Pat Richardson.
To my right.
Paul Thompson.
And Lance is on YouTube.
Lance Johnson.
There you go. So Lance is doing this from home. So we have a quorum. We can start going with the meeting. First, I'll go over the data, the current map, and what we did, and the numbers, because we are going by the numbers. So the current map that we have that's in the county, our tasking was to go after population balance for all of the connecting or adjacent districts. And right now, according to our lawyers, it was 10%. That was our goal. As you will see as we get to our data, actually, we did better than 10%. So the current four districts, I'll go over it. District four was an overweight compared to the average. They had 7,641 people more than the average that they should have been. And so District one was actually short. They were short 1,813. District two was short, 3,852. And District three was short, 1,977. If you add up the negatives to the positive, it goes to zero. So that was the imbalance. As for percentages for population, just to give you a flavor, population for the current map goes from 7.07% to 31.807%. We also had some other categories that we had in the data from the census. We had people greater than 18. To me, it really doesn't help me much because it doesn't talk about the people below that are still eligible to vote. But for the current map, it was 8.64% to 31.29% for the adjustments, for the comparisons. For registered voters, which was accurate numbers, it varied from 2.47% to 24.92%. So what we did, we had a very great, I guess every time we do this, we get better IT. So this was a very good IT that helped us with the maps. So we were using existing software that we had that really wasn't designed for what we did, but it actually worked out pretty well. And IT could pretty much, if we needed a plot, they'd make it for us. So I'm very appreciative of what IT did. So we all did our maps, and we eventually voted on a map. And we picked Matt's map. That's Matt down there. Mine was very similar, so I was okay with that. So what Matt put together for population, it basically was .34% to 1.01%. So instead of the 10%, we actually did a lot better. The other thing that we looked at, it wasn't, we didn't vote on it as for like a strict compliance, but we looked at natural boundaries and other boundaries like roads. We also tried to keep things together, communities. We actually did add the Chestnut Hills, Chestnut Ridge together. Currently, it's split between District two and District one. So on the new map, it's combined. But if you look at the voters growing to 18 on Matt's map, it went from .48% to 5.74%. And the voters, registered voters, was .648% to 5.59%. So we got very good to what our legal requirement was by the county attorneys. So with that, I'll let John, if you want to do your statement.
All right. Welcome to the St. Mary's County Redistricting Board Public Hearing to Consider Public Comments on Proposed Boundaries of Districts for the Election of County Commissioners in the 2022 General Election and thereafter. Those wishing to offer public comment tonight should have signed up on the forms located in the lobby of the Chesapeake Building here at 41770 Baldridge Street in Leonardtown. If you arrived after the forms were taken, you will have an opportunity to speak at the end of comments from those who have already registered. For those unable to join us in person but who wish to address the board, please call 301-475-4200, extension 1234, to provide your name and address for the record. You will then be given an opportunity to speak to the board through telephone conference. And again, that number is 301-475-4200, extension 1234. All speakers tonight will be allotted three minutes to address the redistricting board. Speakers representing organizations will be allotted a total of five minutes to address the redistricting board. At the end of your allotted time, we will let you know that your time has expired. We ask that you respect the time limits in order to give all those who wish to participate an opportunity to be heard tonight. This public hearing is being televised live on St. Mary's County Government TV 95 and the county's YouTube channel. If you should miss any part of this hearing, it will re-air on Channel 95 Sunday, November 14th at 7:00 p.m., and will remain available for on-demand viewing on the St. Mary's County Government YouTube channel. Please also note that the public comment period will remain open for seven days following tonight. Should the public wish to send an email to csmc@stmarysmd.com or by U.S. mail to P.O. Box 653, Leonardtown, Maryland 20650. At this time, we have a total of seven citizens who have signed up to give remarks in person tonight and asked the first person, Colin J. Foster, to approach the microphone in the middle, and please state your name and address for the record.
Can I pop it off a second?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Colin Foster, and I am a resident of this county in Piney Point. Let's make it very clear to the people what this proposal does to our democracy here in St. Mary's. It blatantly rejects the founding principles our nation was built on, such as popular sovereignty and consent of the governed. Without excuse or apology, this commission has deluded and disenfranchised voters of color in Lexington Park, Great Mills, and California by separating communities of interest in order to crack their power apart into white-majority Republican districts. This calls into question the legality of this proposal under the Voting Rights Act. I want my time spent here in front of the public to expose the truth of your intentions. You're expecting Delegate Crosby to reintroduce his single-member district bill in Annapolis in one to two years and expect it to pass with flying colors. The only way to maintain the one-party rule is to eradicate the Democratic majority districts in South County. How ironic for an all-white Republican commission to do such an act of deception and institutional white supremacy when the same party who cried foul in 2020 couldn't win an honest presidential election. Our democracy as it stands is illegitimate and fails to uphold the basic tenets needed in order to maintain it. Because this commission is all Republican, unelected, and its final decision isn't subject to referendum or veto power, it proves to the voters that the Republicans can and never will govern with the majority's trust and conviction. The only way to win in this county is to concretely steal all future elections and silence the opposition at the ballot box. What an honest and fair map looks like is a competitive seat, including St. George's with neighborhoods around the St. Mary's River, a Democratic majority district for South County to include Lexington Park in the base, and two Republican majority districts up north to include Leonardtown, Mechanicsville, Morganza, and Golden Beach. This map would roughly match the party affiliation ratio the county has now. If the members of this commission wish to maintain their personal and political reputations as a fair, patriotic, constitutional conservative, then I suggest they follow the tenets of basic democracy and completely start from scratch.
The next registered speaker is Rose Frederick. Ms. Frederick, if you could please approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Rose Frederick. I live at 40440 Frederick Lane, Loveville, Maryland. Why are we here? Why is this map, why is that so disconnected from the 28,000 people that live in Lexington Park and Great Mills? Why nine election precincts and two with the most minorities? Are you now saying that 28% of the population do not count and their voices do not matter? Why would Chestnut Hills still intact? Is it because of the majority race in those areas? Really? We are now in year 2021, and you still want to say or make the perception that certain individual voices do not matter. For years, we have heard that the map does not properly align to the population. And now here you are making a map that needed a little tweaking and changed it so dramatically. Why would you upset, why wouldn't you be upset if someone came in your home and split up your family for no apparent reason? Then power now? You want to do this to the residents of Lexington Park and Great Mills. Stop the political craziness and do the right thing. You would rather overpopulate one district and underpopulate another just for power, or at least that is what is being perceived. Is that what you want, or do you want to ensure that this map is fairly drawn? Please redraw the map and take into consideration the districts that needs, their needs, and the impact of its people. This is not drawing a black-and-white line and making it a working document. This is a permanent document and an end of the conversation for 10 years. Livelihoods are affected by your map and plans, and this will fall on your shoulders for years to come. Can you handle that blame and stress? You will be the face of this change, which is wrong. Can you really handle people pointing at you? I will say that it was requested, and names were provided of experienced persons to be placed on this board so that what is happening now did not happen. But the county commissioners did not want that to happen. Commissioner O'Connor told me in an email that he wanted people inexperienced with working on county government boards. And now we have this fiasco, and you, the board, is being blamed. It's reelection time, and the county commissioners are trying to create a structure to suit their needs, and it must be rejected. This massive failure is set to be blamed on you, and it must be rejected and not moved further. Do the right thing and redraw the map. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Mrs. Ann Marie Abel. Mrs. Abel, if you could please approach the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ann Marie Abel. I live at 22869 Newtown Neck Road, Leonardtown. Thank you for giving your time and energy to this board. I am not in favor of this proposed redistricting map. A flawed process from the start has contrived an over-processed and over-produced redistricting map. Instead of producing a map that moves the fewest number of people and moves the smallest number of boundaries. We are presented with proposed changes affecting 28,266 people, which is about 25% of our current population based on the 2020 census. Why? Where is the explanation for why 25% of the people have to be moved to another district? It seems by this measurement, the goal fell way short. Mr. Thompson's proposed map only affected 8,000 people. So it is possible. Do better. The proposed redistricting map fails to support the communities of Hollywood and Lexington Park. At Monday's public hearing, the chair stated in his opening remarks, "One of our biggest problems is Lexington Park." Apparently, that was solved by splitting the community of Lexington Park and adding Hollywood to District four. What do these two towns have in common? The redistricting board's open and televised meetings neglected to discuss the rationale for such a realignment. Did they even ask the current residents of Hollywood or Lexington Park? Did they ask any of the 28,266 people, or just the ones who are going to run for county commissioner and Board of Education? And speaking of the redistricting board's meetings, during the 7 October meeting, Dr. Richardson asked the deputy county attorney, John Hauser, if the board should consider future population changes. Mr. Hauser responded that the board should consider what is in terms of population, not what could be. Evidently, the chair is still using what could be rationale, what could be rationale, when he said on Monday, "District four is still going to grow in 10 years." This is for a future redistricting board to address, not this one. Besides, population changes can be up or down. Any attempts to make assumptions about future population growth and trends and to solve for them now without data is out of scope. I think that the proposed redistricting map is a preemptive strike on the likelihood of at-large voting going away in the near future. This is when each commissioner and Board of Education district will vote for their own, and the rest of the county doesn't. This is what could be, certainly not a done deal. Anybody questioning the rationale of the proposed map will be told what I overheard a current county commissioner say just the other night. These changes don't really matter because of our at-large voting. I am not in favor of this proposed redistricting map. As long as a longtime registered voter and taxpayer of St. Mary's County, I respectfully request you to go back to the drawing board and make improvements based on feedback from these public hearings. Thank you.
The next speaker is Caitlin Frayer. Ms. Frayer, if you would please approach the microphone in the middle and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Frayer, and I live at 44980 Hampton's Boulevard in Leonardown. I'm speaking tonight in strong opposition to the proposed redistricting map. This map splits communities, and the lack of diversity and representation from the communities that this map directly affects is a major red flag to the whole community. There is an average, as the chair stated, of about 28,000 people per district. That is also the amount of people that were moved to a different district. So why, when one of your goals was to move and affect the least amount of people possible, did you instead move an entire district's worth of people? District four was only over 7,600 people, yet instead we moved 28,000 people. Make it make sense to me, because it really doesn't make sense to pretty much anyone in this room and no one from Monday's meeting. Did you realize that it costs about $2 to print every voter registration card? So when you go and change your address at the MVA, they send you a new voter registration card? According to the Board of Elections, it costs about $2 to print every single one of those cards. So by moving 28,000 people from one voter district to another, we now have to print out that many new voter registration cards before the general election. That is a huge amount of money that is coming out of the taxpayers' dollars that we have no explanation for why this happened this way. That is a huge, huge red flag. Overall, it's the splitting up of communities that is really my main issue. Lexington Park and Great Mills go together. They are like this. There is no reason to break them apart. We need to make sure that communities stay together, and that, I hope that you take this feedback, and you go back, and you make the changes, and that you do not just ignore every single one of us that will be speaking for the remainder of your redistricting hearings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Barbara Thompson. Mrs. Thompson, if you could please approach the microphone in the middle and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Barbara Thompson. I live at 43865 Thompson Farm Lane in Hollywood. I had been a member of the previous redistricting committee, and I will say that we did not have the advantage that this committee had to be able to manipulate using census districts. So we were forced to pretty much use voter registration. And we did the best we could to keep communities of interest together while still trying to apportion the four commissioner districts equitably, if you will. I think what you've done here is not a service to the people of this county. I think you should have stayed with, more with keeping the map pretty much the way it was to not further confuse the voters, who are going to be confused anyway when we get new legislative and congressional districts. So I would encourage you to go back to the drawing board. I watched the previous meetings that you had. I know that the minority came up with a map that was much more compact. Maybe it wasn't as good as it should have been in terms of dealing with the population in Lexington Park. But that doesn't mean that still can't be adjusted. As far as being proud about the percentages, well, there's no question, but that things are going to change in the next 10 years. And so, I mean, when you throw the percentages out, for most people, it's like, what? What they more are interested in is, you know, where I live and who my commissioner's going to be, and the idea that somebody is going to represent an area that goes from Lexington Park all the way up past Oakville. I just, if I were running, I would not want to have to deal with that long. You know, I would like something that's more compact and more contiguous. So anyway, just want to put my two cents in. I'm not pleased with the map that has been proposed. I think we could do better. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Brandon Russell. Mr. Russell, if you could please approach the microphone in the middle and state your full name and address for the record.
Brandon Russell, 22291 Meadow Lane, Leonardown. Tonight, I'd like to talk about facts and frustrations. I'll start with some facts. Between 2000 and 2010, the population of St. Mary's County increased by 22% or about 19,000 people. Between 2010 and 2020, the population increased by 8% or nearly 9,000 people. The previous redistricting board in 2011 made minimal changes to the commissioner districts, moving election precincts six dash three from Commissioner District two into District four. They did not split any election precincts. Under your proposed map, nine election precincts were split, with six of those split just because of how you've drawn Commissioner District four. Your proposed map affects more than 28,000 voters in the county. As somebody has already mentioned, each of those voters will require a new voter registration card, and with a rough estimate of $2 per card I was given by the Board of Elections, that total amounts to $56,532 in cost just for voter registration cards as a result of your decisions. I'm at a loss to understand why your map has been drawn drastically and affects so many people. When considering that our 2020 population increase is less than half that of the 2010 increase, it's difficult to understand why this board has made so many changes to the map. My lack of understanding only increases when I recognize that the previous board in 2011 made a simple change that affected far fewer people. Now, a little history. The local redistricting board for our county was created in 1974. At the time, St. Mary's County had only three commissioner districts. But in 1981, a fourth commissioner district was created by state law, and this district encompassed the eighth election district. A decade later, in 1992, the approved redistricting plan modified which election districts and precincts belonged in which commissioner districts. However, even with these changes, the Lexington Park-Great Mills area and its respective elected election precincts were kept wholly in District four. And as far as I can tell, that has been the case for the last 40 years. The frustration you hear is, for some, 40 years or more worth of struggle to advocate for their community. For others like myself, the frustration is because I don't see a representative government in St. Mary's County. Community members advocated for a fair and balanced redistricting board, but the commissioners ignored us. I don't mean to impugn any possible qualifications of anyone sitting on this board tonight. However, I seriously believe if our local government is to serve all county residents, it must reflect the very demographics of this county. It matters who sits on our volunteer boards and commissions. It matters who makes the decisions for redistricting. And most of all, it matters who we elect to represent us. I ask that you go back to the drawing board, consider alternative maps that were presented, and create a fair map while keeping communities whole. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Elfrida Mathis. Ms. Mathis, if you could please approach the microphone in the center, and remember to state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Elfrida Talbert Mathis, and I reside at 45811 Delegate's Court, Great Mills, Maryland. And I came tonight to finish what I started on Monday. I want to thank you all for your service, and I'm speaking in opposition of the proposed map. And I have questions. I understand that in order to reduce the density in the fourth commissioner district, there were 28,000 people moved around. According to the 2020 census, as stated in the Southern Maryland News Friday, October 29th, 2021, District one, 28,695. District two, 28,553. District three, 28,306. District four, 28,404. And it's a little curious, because I believe these are the numbers that are in the draft map, and I want to see the original census numbers before the draft map, because then I can do a better comparison of what is and what is too big. What are the current population numbers as reflected in the 2020 census to compare to the draft numbers? Information in the same report shows a change in position from second to fourth or last in the voter registration representation of the fourth district when 2013 figures are compared to draft changes. How many people moves are actually recommended for each district? And in which areas are they located? My research, and I brought my little map back, identified a move from the second district to the third, and the second district to the fourth, and the fourth district to the second, and the first district to the fourth, and the fourth district to the first, and the fourth district to the first. Now, that's one, two, three, four, five, six moves, and there's a little sliver in there that I really couldn't identify. I'm talking fast because the chairperson shut me down. Are the...
We'll give you time.
Most changes, are the moves or changes politically motivated, culturally motivated, economically motivated, or all of the above? A review of all of the moves begs the question, what are the redistricting goals? Give us the people who represent, who you represent, the before and the after numbers. Give us a presentation of the facts you used to arrive at the conclusions in the proposed or draft map. I cannot support the proposed redistricting plan. We all need more information. Thank you.
Do we have any call-ins?
We do not. I'm going to check just to make sure.
... for the state in the redistricting board public hearing. May I have your name and address for the public record?
Hi, Gabrielle. This is Diane Gleisner. I was just making sure there were no callers on the call center line.
There are no callers.
Thank you.
So we don't have any more callers?
Are there any additional persons here who wish to give public comment to the redistricting board on this occasion? All right. Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I believe that concludes this public hearing.
I agree, John. Thanks. Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned.